Hey, welcome everyone. If you're just joining us for this public hearing, we're gonna wait a few more minutes and we'll get started around 5:33. Hey. Aloha and mahalo for joining. My name is David Sakota and I'm the Fisheries Program Manager for the State of Hawaii, Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources. I will be conducting tonight's public hearing along with the DAR staff at our in-person host sites. It is now 5:33 PM and this public hearing is called to order. This is a formal statewide public hearing on proposed amendments to Hawaii Administrative Rules Chapter 13-74, License and Permit Provisions and Fees for Fishing Fish and Fish Products. The primary purpose of this proposal is to establish a non-resident recreational marine fishing license, a commercial marine vessel license, and a commercial marine dealer license to update the fees for, to update the fee schedules for various licenses and permits, and to make other housekeeping amendments for clarity and consistency throughout the chapter. As required by law, the proposed rules have been drafted in Ramseer format, copies of which can be found in the announcement section of the DAR website. Those attending the meeting in person may ask DAR staff for a copy. This public hearing is being simultaneously livestreamed to the DAR YouTube channel for anyone wishing to observe the public hearing but not provide testimony. For your convenience, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide and a link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public the opportunity to provide comments in the form of oral and written testimony on these proposed amendments. Approval to conduct this public hearing was obtained from the Board of Land and Natural Resources at their board meeting on Friday, May 26, 2023. The legal notice of this public hearing was published in the July 15, 2023 Saturday issue of the Garden Island Newspaper and the July 16, 2023 Sunday issue of the Honolulu Star Advertiser Newspaper. Additionally, notice of this public hearing was posted on the Draft Rules and Public Notices page of the DAR website where digital copies of the draft rules in Ramseer format can be found, as well as posted on the announcements page of the DAR website. First, we will watch a short video explaining the proposed changes to the administrative rules. We will then begin the public testimony period, which will be conducted as follows. Everyone testifying via Zoom was required to preregister in order to get the link to testify. We will keep the registration open throughout the public hearing and will monitor our email in case anyone has trouble registering or joining the Zoom to provide their testimony. However, if you're unable to join via Zoom, you may still provide oral testimony at one of the in-person hearing locations listed in this slide or you may submit written testimony by following the directions at the bottom of this slide. Everyone testifying in person at one of the host sites should have written their information down on the sign-in sheet provided at the host site. Those attending in person who have not registered but would like to provide testimony can alert the DAR public hearing officer at your in-person site at this time and your name will be added to the list. It is important that everyone who wishes to testify provide their name and contact information so we have an accurate record of everyone providing testimony. You will be called by a member of the DAR staff when it is your turn to testify. We ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their microphones muted when not speaking. We will take testimony in the following order. First, we will take in-person testimony from people who have been signed up to testify at the in-person host sites beginning on Kauai, then Oahu. Once all in-person testimony is gathered, we will take Zoom testimony. I will then take testimony from anyone else wishing to provide testimony that was not called upon. Last, if we have additional time, I will allow those wishing to provide additional testimony to do so. Please keep your testimony brief and on the subject to allow everyone the opportunity to testify. Each person providing testimony will be given three minutes. And please be aware that if you go beyond three minutes, I will kindly ask you to conclude your testimony. We're recording this hearing to make a written record, so please state your full name before giving your testimony. Make sure to speak clearly so we accurately record your testimony for the record. And please turn off the live YouTube stream of this hearing while testifying as it will cause an echo. Please remember to respect the opinions of all testifiers and that this hearing is not an opportunity for accusations or rebuttals. There may be differing opinions. Everyone will have an opportunity to voice their opinion for the department to consider. All testimony should be directed to me, not to the audience. And please note that this hearing is simultaneously being streamed on YouTube. The livestream will be recorded and preserved on YouTube as a matter of public record. Please be aware that by offering your oral testimony today, you are consenting to being audio and video recorded if your camera is on. Let's begin with a short video on the background explaining the proposed administrative rules.
Proposed amendments to Hawaii Administrative Rules Chapter 13-74, Comprehensive License Amendments. As mentioned earlier, the purpose for this rulemaking action is first to implement three new licenses: a non-resident recreational marine fishing license mandated within Hawaii Revised Statutes, Section 188-72; a commercial marine vessel license authorized by HRS Section 189-2; and a commercial marine dealer license authorized by HRS Section 189-10; second, to update the fee schedules for various licenses which have not been updated since 1999; and last, to make other housekeeping amendments to maintain clarity and consistency throughout this chapter and with other chapters. Let's first review the non-resident recreational marine fishing license. The mandate by the Hawaii State Legislature was signed into law as Act 48 in June of 2021 and later codified under HRS Section 188-72 entitled Non-Resident Recreational Marine Fishing License. Application, fees, restrictions. The law requires DAR to adopt rules to implement the license. HRS Section 188-72 also specifies certain terms for the license, such as the license fee that we are unable to change. Therefore, these rules are limited to the authority within HRS 188-72 and cannot deviate from the specific requirements of the statute. Although we do not have the authority to change any language of HRS Section 188-72 through rulemaking, we wanted to point out some key language within the statute for your reference. The statute requires the department to issue non-resident recreational fishing licenses for any non-Hawaii resident to fish for, take, or catch any marine life for recreational or non-commercial purposes, including subsistence. The statute defines resident of Hawaii as an individual who has established their primary residence and worked in the state continuously for a period of 12 months or longer immediately prior to applying for or obtaining a license or permit, filed or paid the individual's state income taxes for the previous tax period, or has established domicile in the state with the following forms of ID: a valid state ID or driver's license, a valid school ID, or an official document issued within the past 30 days. Further, the statute exempts non-residents under 15 years of age and active-duty military and their spouses and minor children from being required to obtain a non-resident recreational marine fishing license. The statute also sets the fee schedule for the non-resident recreational marine fishing license as follows: it will be $20 for a one-day license, $40 for a seven-day license, and $70 for an annual license, which is consistent with other coastal states as outlined in the table in this slide, noting that Hawaii is the only coastal state in the United States that doesn't have a recreational marine fishing license. These licenses will be available for purchase online through an online licensing portal that we are currently contracting, as well as in person at any of the DAR offices. Additionally, we will be working with interested retail vendors to set up the online licensing system where non-residents can purchase a license in-store at the retailer. Revenues will be deposited into DAR's Sport Fish Special Fund, which was established under HRS Section 187A-9.5. The statute specifically outlines that the funds deposited into the Sport Fish Special Fund shall be used for programs and activities to implement Title 12 Subtitle 5, including the provision of state funds to match federal grants under the Federal Aid in Sport Fish Restoration Act for projects concerning sport fish, for acquisition of the use, development, or maintenance of trails and accessways into public fishing areas, fishery management areas, marine life conservation districts, or private lands where public sport fishing is authorized, and for research programs and activities concerning sport fish conservation and management. The following are some examples of how the funds generated from the non-resident recreational marine fishing license could be used: user-friendly online licensing system and app; fish aggregation device program; improved recreational fishing surveys; artificial reef program; sport fish enhancement projects such as research and stock enhancement for key fish species, such as moai or kumu, for example; new public fishing areas and fish cleaning stations. Next, we'll review the Commercial Marine Vessel License. The authority for the Commercial Marine Vessel License was granted by the State of Hawaii Legislature through Act 43, which was signed into law in June of 2021 and codified as an amendment to HRS Section 189-2. The new statutory language grants the department authority to adopt rules to implement the Commercial Marine Vessel License as an alternative to the current requirement that each crew member on a commercial marine vessel have a separate valid commercial marine license and to establish fees for the license. In order to qualify for a Commercial Marine Vessel License, you must have a valid individual commercial marine license, be at least 18 years of age, provide proper ID as specified by the department, and not have any unmet child support as required by HRS Section 189-2. The proposed fee schedule for the Commercial Marine Vessel License is based on initial scoping with commercial operators and is as follows: for non-longline vessels less than 22 feet in length, a commercial marine vessel license will be $100. For non-longline vessels greater than or equal to 22 feet in length, the license will be $200. And for all longline vessels, the license will be $1,500. Once again, the license will be available to purchase online and in person at any DAR office, similar to the Commercial Marine License. The owner of the Commercial Marine Vessel License does not have to be on the vessel while fishing, but the license must be on the vessel at all times. There is no limit to the number of crew covered under a single Commercial Marine Vessel License. The commercial reporting responsibility will fall upon the individual issue the license. The Commercial Marine Vessel License will also fulfill the requirement under HRS Section 189-2 that all charter crew and operators must have valid commercial marine licenses. The Commercial Marine Vessel License is not mandatory and is meant to streamline the licensing process rather than requiring all captains and crew to have individual commercial marine licenses. Further, passengers or charter customers that are not part of the crew onboard a vessel that is covered under a Commercial Marine Vessel License will not be granted any additional allowances nor have any other license requirements waived. For example, a non-resident on a fishing charter that has a Commercial Marine Vessel License will still need a non-resident recreational marine fishing license. The revenues from the Commercial Marine Vessel License will be deposited into the Commercial Fisheries Special Fund established in HRS Section 189-2.4, which specifically details that the funds deposited into the Commercial Fisheries Special Fund may only be used for programs and activities for projects concerning aquatic life used for commercial purposes, developing and conducting resource monitoring programs, conducting studies to determine the sustainable use of aquatic life for commercial purposes, and developing recommendations for acceptable levels of use; research programs and activities concerning the conservation and management of aquatic life for commercial purposes; programs and activities concerning the importation and management, preservation, propagation, enforcement, and protection of aquatic life used for commercial purposes; and payroll for personnel of the department or the awarding of grants in aid to or contracts with the University of Hawaii or other qualified organizations or individuals to develop or implement the programs and activities for the conservation and management of aquatic life for commercial purposes. Next, we'll review the Commercial Marine Dealer License. The current rules include a definition of a commercial marine dealer. However, the current rules only include a one-time free dealer registration requirement as well as a weekly reporting requirement for all registered commercial marine dealers. This license is meant as a means to ensure accurate data and maximize enforceability. The registration requirement cannot be revoked, so enforcement options are limited when trying to deter repeat violators. Also, the current registration system is difficult to enforce in the field as the Division of Conservation and Resources Enforcement has no way to identify registered commercial marine dealers. All the loopholes within the current registration system has resulted in data deficiencies. The proposed Commercial Marine Dealer License will be $100 annually for each commercial marine dealer, meaning one license per individual or retail location that receives marine life from commercial marine license holders. The license must be kept at every applicable market outlet and provided to a do-care officer upon request. The reporting requirements for commercial marine dealers will remain the same and the licenses will be available for purchase online. As with the revenues from the Commercial Marine Vessel License, the revenues from the Commercial Marine Dealer License will be deposited into the Commercial Fisheries Special Fund, whose uses we covered earlier. Benefits of the Commercial Marine Dealer License include better enforceability and better data, as well as funding for DAR's operations. Next, we will review the updated license fee schedules. As new technology becomes available and the demand for licenses and permits increase, the costs of implementation of the division's licensing and permitting system grows. Therefore, the fee schedule for these licenses and permits, which has not changed since the 90s, must be updated to accommodate for the rising costs and implementation in addition to the cost of ensuring the system is up to date with new technology as it becomes available. Subsequently, the proposal includes increased fees for the bait license, the mullet pond operator and close season sales license, the conakrab and lobster close season sales license, the special marine animal or product possession and sale license, and the aquaculture license from $50 to $100. Additionally, the proposal establishes a fee of $200 for the license to sell reared species, which is a two-year license, as well as fees for the three new licenses that were discussed earlier: the non-resident recreational marine fishing license, the commercial marine vessel license, and the commercial marine dealer license. Last, this rulemaking action also includes miscellaneous housekeeping amendments. The housekeeping amendments provided within this proposal include: adding new definitions for bait fish, bait fishing report, catch report, commercial marine vessel license, fishing activities, license period, main Hawaiian islands, non-resident, permittee, and qualified aquaculturist; removing the definitions for board and northwestern Hawaiian islands; amending the definition of resident; clarifying that licenses and permits are non-refundable; clarifying the administrative penalty schedule for violations of the chapter; adding asset forfeiture as an administrative enforcement tool within the chapter; removing the northwestern Hawaiian Islands fishing permit; adding a catch reporting requirement for all bait license holders; giving the department discretion to require additional reports from aquaculture license holders; and other non-substantive housekeeping amendments for clarity and consistency with other chapters.
Alright, we've now reached the testimony portion of this public hearing. As a reminder, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide and a link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. So if you just want to listen into this hearing without providing testimony, you're welcome to log off this Zoom meeting and view the YouTube livestream of this hearing. You will be called upon by a member of the DAR staff when it is your turn to testify. We ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their microphones muted when not speaking. As I mentioned earlier, we will take testimony in the following order. First, we'll take in-person testimony from people who have been signed up to testify at the in-person host sites beginning on Kauai, then Oahu. Once all in-person testimony is gathered, we will take Zoom testimony. As a reminder, please keep your testimony to three minutes in order to ensure that everyone who signed up has a chance to give testimony. If there is extra time at the end of everyone on the list and you would like more time to testify, we will allow those who already spoke to give additional testimony. I will now stop sharing my screen so everyone providing testimony can be clearly seen. Okay, we'll first take any in-person testimony on Kauai. Aaron, is there any in-person testimony on Kauai?
There is not. There is no one here.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will be taking in-person testimony on Oahu.
Can you hear me, David?
Yep, we can hear you.
David, can you hear me? Trying to figure out our audio here.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, first testifier from Oahu is Reed Matzura.
Aloha. Hello. My name is Reed Matzura. I'm a resident of Oahu on the North Shore in Waialua. Basically, I wanted to discuss about the illegal eye nets that are being thrown, I guess, throughout the state as far as for bait fish. We've had halaloo and owama and moai and nehu and baby mullets and stuff like that right along the shoreline. And now is the season, but other people have been coming out with their nets, the illegal eye net, and throwing it. And I ran into a guy who had a commercial license. He told me, "Well, I have a commercial license." But the problem is, is that, you know, nobody knows he has a commercial license, but other people see him throwing that net. And when he brings it up, you know, he just empties it out and walks off. So they really don't know. So I was wondering if there's any kind of designation or a t-shirt or badge or something like that that at least he can identify himself as having a license. And, you know, because there are a lot of kids around watching and they assume that, hey, if you can do them, I can do them too. And that's the problem. Because they're getting all these illegal nets from Indonesia and Southeast Asia and they're cheap. You know, they get them online and they're cheap. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the DLNR and aquatics people really understand the problem that, you know, is going down and it's always gonna be there if there's nobody protecting the fry. And, you know, we lost a lot of the limu, you know, that used to be along the reefs and the limu was the one that was protecting all the fry because the bigger fish would have a hard time catching them and the guys wouldn't throw their nets over the limu because it's too much trouble. But now that there's no limu, those guys are out there. And I've seen them catching the halaloo and the owama and the moai. And, you know, I just wanna make sure that, you know, there is some kind of, you know, way that these people who are actually doing it, you know, I agree that they gotta, you know, put in how much they catch and where they're catching it from and stuff like that, and that's great. But, you know, we gotta make sure that the rest of the public understands. You know, because I read through many of these things and 20 years ago I wrote this report. In fact, I sent it to you guys, you know, as a testimony. But, you know, even under the state's coastal zone management program, they listen to five different things that the state, you know, should be paying attention to. And one of the biggest ones was public participation in and awareness of ocean coastal resources as well as their management and says are lacking. But that came from that coastal management report. You know, so I understand that the DLNR knows that there's a lot of problems. But the only way they can solve it is making sure that the public understands what the problem is. But the only way they can solve it is making sure that the public understands what the problem is. You know, I mean, when I put this paper together, it's actually a 20-year-old paper that I had originally sent to the DLNR, the DOE, and the governor. And I was telling the people here, it was really sad because I never even got a response to say thank you for the letter. So that tells me that, you know, there's no concern. And that bothers me as a resident all my life. And I've lived all my life on the beach, and I watch people come and go and what they do. And it's, that's basically what I have to say.
Hey, thank you.
Next is Ed Watamora.
Hey, Ed.
Hey, how's it, David?
How's it?
Um, and hello to the rest of whoever's viewing on this call. Ed Watamora, representing HVAC. And, well, I wasn't gonna testify on this, but Reed kind of sparked my, got my interest up because I personally have been at Waimea Bay. And you, there are literally, you know, maybe 100 or more fishermen lined up on the beach casting their lines out for halaloo. And along comes a boat and begins to net the school. And everybody's like up in arms and, you know, people are calling "Dobor" and, "Hey, what's this guy? What's going on with this guy?" And so, I mean, a lot of people say that, you know, the one commercial boat can take X amount of fish, but all those fishermen are taking even more fish, extracting even more fish from the resource. But, uh, the thing that they're not considering is the enjoyment of all those people on the beach. You know, they come there, the halaloo comes in once a year, and they come out there and they just look forward to it all year and, you know, and they're just so disappointed when, when this net guy comes and takes a bulk of the school. You know, even though it's a legal operation, yeah. They don't know that it's legal for one thing, but anyway, I just wanted to say that. Also wanted to commend you on the commercial vessel license auction, that it's been long awaited, and I'm so glad to see that it's finally come to fruition. This is something that the small boat fishermen have been pushing for for at least 20 years. And to finally see it happening, it gives us a great deal of joy. And we don't have to be illegal anymore. And I hope that with this new paradigm of collaborating with the fishermen, with DAR collaborating with the fishermen, you know, hopefully these kinds of things won't take this long to come to fruition and be more expedient. And thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, Ed.
Last on Oahu is Alton Miyasaka.
Hello, David.
Hey, Alton.
Alton Miyasaka here. Have a few comments. So going to the marine vessel license, the fee that's being charged, my suggestion is that instead of going by the length of the vessel, you go by number of persons on the vessel. And so you have $100 and $200 as your proposed fees. My suggestion is if it's two or more persons, it's $100. If it's more than three persons, it's $200. And so you keep the same amount of fees that you have listed. You just change it from the length of the vessel to the number of persons on the vessel. The reason for that is because the CML is issued on a per-person basis. And so you wanna keep the marine vessel license fee structure similar to a per-person. Also, because the longliners are being charged more, it's because the typical crew size for a longline vessel is seven. And because the vessel is primarily foreign crew, that's why we suggested a higher fee schedule because of the foreign crew members. But it's still based on seven and it's still based on the non-resident rate. And so moving to the aquaculture license, two suggestions. The first is to allow the vessel, the valid licensee, this is the aquaculture license. Anyone who has a valid aquaculture license can catch and sell the pool that they are able to collect under the aquaculture license. And they can sell it to another facility that's also similarly licensed. That's because at some facilities' ponds, they don't have the crew to go out and catch their own pool. And so if they could buy it from another pond, then that would enable them to maintain the stocks in their pond. The second is that there's a provision in the license that says that you have to keep the facility, you have to be able to keep the organisms in the facility healthy and good health and all that. And so, but that's placed as a qualification for the license. My suggestion is that you put it as a continuing requirement of the license itself instead of qualification for the license. So there's no qualification involved in maintaining the facility operating well. That's because the facility needs the license before they can get the organisms in the facility. So you cannot actually tell if the facility can maintain those animals unless you have animals in it. Yeah, so you have to thereby guess whether that facility can, in fact, keep those animals alive even before they have the animals inside. And so, change it to not a qualification of the license, but as an ongoing requirement to maintain the license. Third, I would like to propose a professional commercial marine license category. So under the current CML, you would have a professional license category. That's because what we envisioned was that the professional license is permitted to have gears that normal commercial fishermen do not have access to. So in particular, the kule fishermen, because they use very specific surround magnets that take a lot of skill to use. The only persons that should be able to use those kind of gears are people who have experience with those gears. And so you're not allowing, like, just anybody to use that gear, claim that he's a commercial fisherman when they are not actually professional-level fishermen. So it's not just this gear, but there are other gears that will qualify as well. And so, also moving on, I don't know if my three minutes is up and I should come back. What do you recommend?
You can keep going. Can you hear me? You can keep going.
Can I really hear you? Sorry, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Why don't I come back?
Okay, that's fine. Anyone else?
Yeah, that was the last person from Oahu.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next we'll take Zoom testimony. So if you have registered for this Zoom hearing, we'll presume that you're interested in providing testimony, and we'll be calling your name in the order that you signed up. If you do not wish to provide oral testimony, simply indicate so when we call your name or let us know through the chat feature. So first up on Zoom, we have Phil Rarick.
Aloha. I can keep it to three minutes or keep it together if you want to let me finish. You tell me what to do, David.
Okay, you know, we don't have a high turnout tonight, so I'm being lax on the three-minute requirement. So, yeah, it's okay if you run over a little bit.
Thank you, Alton. Okay, pursuant to 1374 license and permit fees, I have the following verbal testimony to submit. My name is Phil Rarick. I'm testifying as an individual. Regarding 1374-2 general section insofar as exemptions, it stipulates that no person allowed for the use of the license or permit shall be exempt if the license or permit is issued for, I emphasize for, which is underscored, a vessel. I have issues insofar as on individuals who claim they are exempt from the administrative rules under the proposal that they are for a vessel. As an example, I submit for your consideration as an individual in possession stating that they're exempt from the individual bag limits in possession of fish for sale without a CML to a commercial dealer as a representative of a CVL holder. In other words, an individual showing up to a commercial dealer to sell fish, they're stating that they have an exemption because they're a CVL holder. That individual, are they the permittee or they're representative? Or are they a broker for same? My suggestion is that we only allow the actual individual licensee and not somebody that gets transferred fish to them and they show up at a commercial marine dealer to sell the fish. I emphasize, do not allow an individual that claims that they have a CVL exemption. With pursuant to Section 137411, which is the non-resident license, I concur with, you know, the issuance as far as online. I highly recommend that fees go to DLNR direct, not into the general funds and for use by DAR and DoCare staff. Pretty straightforward. Insofar as continuing on that, which is not in the proposal, recommend a recreational resident license. No charge for minors, seniors, or native Hawaiians as an exemption. The reason for this is to capture data at the state level, which we do not have now, so that we can get in-kind fees back and funding from the federal government. Because currently, right now, the recreational, I emphasize recreational, individuals that purchase sport fishing tackle, which is considered under 130-pound cast, i.e. line, rod and reel, et cetera. They're already paying taxes, and there's no way for DAR to capture those, that data for the number of actual recreational sport fishermen in the state. A reasonable fee and exemption would be there as aforementioned. Regarding 1347, correction, 1374-11, Section A, at the end of the last sentence, I would add over 40 feet for class-three boats. What I'm going after here, I'll articulate in a minute. 1374-23, which is the CVL commercial vessel license, I would omit less than 22 feet. In other words, not allow a CVL license. I would amend Section 2 to order over 40 feet, again, over 40 feet. And I'm okay with Section 3, which is pursuant to the requirements for the longline vessel. And so far as a new Section K, which does not exist, I would add in there persons operating under a CVL exemption must be on board, I emphasize on board, a vessel greater than 40 feet or a sport fishing charter vessel or a longline vessel. Only the CVL license holder may be a person permitted to sell or transfer fish to a CMD, commercial marine license dealer. That is a difficulty that DoCare has right now that you articulated earlier. 1374-45 regarding the commercial marine dealer, I would add in there at retail and also add a new language statement in there insofar as exported from the state. Sideline comment, why the prohibition as far as the vessels under 40 feet? There is a shift right now currently that is happening on Oahu, and I emphasize on land Oahu, that there are certain individuals that are operating from shoreline with smaller vessels. These were aforementioned people in the prior herbivore meeting that are targeting herbivore fish. They're going out farther and deeper and targeting said fish. And so subsequently, I believe the existing longline vessel holders that are out there, certainly the charter fishermen that are out there, they're earning a legitimate commercial living with the herbivore proposed rules being implemented, if they're as printed or proposed. I see a paradigm shift for a large number of Pacific islanders that are gonna apply for CVLs to have an exemption. In conclusion, DAR has to allow for enforceable rules by DoCare. And for somebody that claims that they're a CVL crew member and they're not on the vessel that's there and they're at another site that's not adjacent to or on the vessel, get an exemption in the field. That is a loophole that has to be closed before it is put in print. I emphasize, please tighten it up so this proposed amendments to the administrative rules are enforceable as they are right now. I see some issues. End of my testimony.
Hey, thank you, Phil.
Mahalo.
Next up, we have Inga Gibson. Aloha, Inga.
Aloha, David. Thank you for the opportunity, Inga. And opportunity to testify. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So just a few comments, and of course, I will submit more comprehensive written testimony. But I share a lot of Phil's concerns, as noted, but I'll start from the top. We are concerned about the proposed removal of the definition of board because it isn't just a technical, you know, technically removing that. It does have implications because, actually, you know, the board has had the authority to revoke and suspend permits, especially for those committing, you know, egregious marine violations. And it's my understanding DAR has also had this authority. There have been a number of cases where individuals have been under investigation, charged and are convicted where their CMLs have been actually renewed during that same period, never revoked, never suspended. So we would not object to DAR if it's necessary to clarify that DAR has that same authority, which is my understanding that they do have that existing authority. But we would object to removing that authority from the board in those cases where, for whatever reason, DAR does not bring forward that rightful suggestion for a revocation or suspension of a license. We're also concerned about, I guess, the definitions around aquaculture and specifically qualified aquaculturists. Right now, it's essentially you're qualified if you're engaging in the activity, but there are no other qualifications. So I know that you are proposing to add some potential additional reporting requirements, and some of this may be addressed in the terms and conditions of the permit. But again, there needs to be something to really determine who and what facilities are qualified. As you well know, there have been a number of cases where folks have not possessed required permits, whether they be an SAP or an AFL, or they have applied for AFLs where it has been unclear whether or not they would be able to receive those. And so that needs to be clarified and also needs to be some kind of recognizable standards, national standards regarding aquaculture operations. And of course, the potential impacts, not only to the species, the species that are collected, and also the environment around some of these aquaculture facilities. Further, new aquaculture operations, and when I say aquaculture, Further, um, new aquaculture operations, and when I say aquaculture, let me just. Clarify that I'm referring to ornamental aquaculture, not to traditional native Hawaiian fish ponds. Um, but uh, there really needs to be some consultation with the, um, with the community and with Kanaka in, in the area. Um, both where any specimens are collected under an aquaculture facility license and also. Uh, where the animals will potentially be housed that has not been um, considered in the past, a community and local um. Uh, input into these kinds of operations. Um, also the uh, proposed two hundred dollar fee to sell reared species. Um, I think that um, is something that, that may uh, be considered based on. Um, the amount of sales and the commercial um, value of what um, what is being reared. Um, versus uh, just a flat fee that would apply to everyone. Um, another concern is regarding the language around this CMBL. Um, being familiar with the legislation that passed, um, Act forty-three. The language in statute is actually shall be eligible uh, to apply um, or uh, um, not, or just to be eligible. To apply. So um, we believe that these, just like CML, um, are discretionary. And that the language needs to reflect that. So instead of just shall be issued. Um, it should be shall be eligible or may ideally. And uh, this is also um, in line with what you mentioned in your presentation that some, uh, an individual is not required to have a CMBL. As long as they um, have a CML, but it is an option for those. Um, and yeah, we support uh, the majority of the funds. Of course, a lot of that now unfortunately is going to general funds versus to DAR. A deal in our DoCare. So we support that the funding, all of these licensing fees should definitely go. Uh, to uh, the agencies that are enforcing those laws. And then um, in closing, something Phil also caught, um, caught, this is actually. Uh, from the twenty sixteen proposal uh, for these same sections, uh, I don't know if you recall, but there was a proposal. Uh, for these, some of these same changes, increase in fees, licenses and permits. And commercial marine dealers licenses submitted to the board in twenty sixteen. And then it, I guess, was subsequently pulled by DAR and, and now we see it some, what is that? Eight years later. Um, but in that, in the original proposal, it did explicitly add a requirement for those. Commercial marine dealers um, that are involved in exporting. And um, as you know, this is a huge loophole because of course there are those. That may purchase direct from collectors or commercial fishers. They're not obviously purchasing from a dealer and they're completely out of the system. So anyone that is exporting. Um, any marine resource aquatic species outside of the state, you know, that information is very important. It came up recently with the herbivore rules where. There was inquiries as to, um, you know, how many of our Uhu and Kala are actually being shipped out of state and it's my understanding DAR was not able to answer that question because. That's not information that they collect. So anyone exporting, um, that does need to be included. And I echo some of the other concerns. Regarding the public being aware of who actually is in possession of, of the required, you know, um. Licenses. I know that you have an online system that if you know the name of the person, you can look it up. And see if they have um, a CML. I would guess the same for a CMBL, but of course. Um, there should be some other easily identifiable way. Whether or not people engaging in certain activities such as the throw nets that, that Reed mentioned, um, whether or not they're, they're actually operating. Um, legally, um, without just saying, you know, call DoCare and see if they can come down and. And uh, directly uh, investigate. So I'll leave it there and I will submit um, more comprehensive. Uh, written comments before the deadline of the twenty-fifth. So mahalo, David.
Hey, thank you, Inga. And uh, I believe that is the end of the list for those that have signed up. On the Zoom, I'm gonna go back to the in-person site on Oahu. Um, well, first let me check in with Kauai. I don't see Kauai anymore. Uh, okay, let's go back to Oahu. Uh, we can let Alton present additional testimony.
David, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, actually, sorry. Um. Let me just check in. Aloha Clayton, did you wanna provide testimony?
Uh, yes, I would like.
Okay, go ahead Clayton. Let's take your testimony.
I totally forget. Okay, so um, I kinda in opposition to number ten. It's like a papahana moku o kea, yeah? That one they are about taking them some, oh, can you explain that to me, David? Or, or too late?
Yeah, I can't explain anything, but you can provide your comments and then we can follow up after.
Okay. Uh, in opposition to number ten, um, and that's all I like to say.
Okay, right on. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, mahalo, aloha.
Okay, aloha. Um. I'm gonna go, sorry Brian, um. I see Phil has his hand raised again. Phil, before we move on, do you wanna add anything to your testimony?
Yeah, I just uh, wanted to uh, can you hear me audio wise? Okay?
Yes.
All right. So basically, uh. As we go forward with this, it's the intent of my testimony is not to create any loopholes that somebody can claim. I'm a crew member of a CVL and thus I'm in possession of these above the bag limit fish. In recognition, yes, you are correct. Insofar as a herbivore plan. They have to have a permit, if you will, for a specific Uhu or Kala. But that being stated, that still has to be promulgated in those administrative rules passed and approved. Um, currently right now, the system is broken. And individuals are saying, well. I have a commercial marine license and I'm selling to ex-marine dealer. But they are not the people that are uh. Actually catching the fish and for a living selling it. These are brokers that are in between, they're middlemen. That are showing up and they're representing somebody else. It is not the CML holder itself, or in this particular case, as I testified earlier. The CVL. So I have no problem with the commercial guys as far as, you know, going through the normal channels. What I have an issue for is this gray market area. For you've got uh, specific individuals that are going out. They're capturing marine life from the state of Hawaii. They're bringing it in, they're handing it off to somebody else. Those individuals which weren't even in the water are taking it to. A commer- commer- commercial marine licensed dealer. They're buying it, but they're not buying it direct from the CML. Or this CVL as proposed in this administrative rule. That's broken. You gotta fix it. It's gotta be enforceable. That's my whole point. The individuals at the. Uh, proposed vessel license as far as the, the general license for a commercial vessel license. Uh, that would be on board and there, again, I repeat, it should be for the larger vessels, the guys that were legitimately engaged in this. Not the individuals that are the recent Pacific Islander arrivals that are looking for loophole. Currently, right now, they're all claiming it is uh, subsistence and or individual. As soon as the herbivore rules pass, you're gonna see a surge of individuals that are gonna apply for. Permits and also CMLs. That's my point. Please do not allow any loopholes and let DoCare do its job. Mahalo.
Hey, thank you. Let's go back to the Oahu in-person site.
Hello again, this is Alton Mira Fakun. I forgot to mention first time with the CMVL. Uh, there seems to be an inconsistency between the use of the terms person and individuals. They occur in the same section, so um, they, they don't mean the same thing. So you need to clarify, is it issued to an individual or person? What happens if the owner is uh, not there and he's on the mainland? Who's it issued to? Uh, what if the operator is not the owner? Uh, but so his name doesn't occur on the license? That's an issue. Uh, what happens if the person uh, who has been issued a CMVL now wants to take his fish to the market? But his license is on the vessel because he can't legally remove it from the vessel. So how does he tell the market that he has a valid license if he can't have it with him? And so that, that's gonna be a problem. So it's something that you have to figure out as you, as you go along. So. Uh, the other. Comments I have is, um, you should consolidate a number of things. Throughout the chapter into a common chapter under subchapter one. So subchapter one has all the common provisions. So all your, all your qualifications for people applying for licenses. Uh, all your applications should be covered under that list, under that section, under the subchapter. All your fees should be consolidated into one section. So that when you wanna change the fees, you just change the one section and not all the sections and all the. All the licenses and permits. It facilitates changing, uh, creating updates as you go along. Um, if you consolidate these things, uh. A number of reporting requirements are also common. It's like you have to file by a, uh. On a form that's provided by the department. And so that's pretty common. They all have different forms, but they all should be. Uh, mentioned in a report section. Also, the. I know the, the deadlines for when those forms should be submitted is all different. That can still be accommodated into that one section. Uh, under subchapter one. So there's a, there's a number of uh, sections that you're repealing. My suggestion also is you repeal the mullet pond operator's license in favor of the aquaculture license. Uh, and also, uh, there's a number of permits that are not. Uh, currently in this chapter that have been authorized under statutes that you should probably include. Uh, those will be in the comments, so you can take a look at them. So uh, that, I don't see a, a three-minute time. But so thank you for that. Uh, I'll end the testimony there. Uh, thank you for the opportunity.
Hey, thank you, Alton. Uh, anyone else wishing to provide testimony or to add to their prior testimony?
No, that's it for a while.
Okay. Hey. We can move on. Uh, due to the ongoing recovery efforts on Maui, the deadline to submit written testimony has been extended. So we will be accepting written testimony until Friday, September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, please email, or please mail testimonies to the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources. Eleven fifty-one Punch Bowl Street, room three thirty, Honolulu, Hawaii nine six eight one three. Written testimony may also be submitted by email to dlnr.aquatics@hawaii.gov. Uh, you can include in the subject line, testimony for licensing amendments. So. We know that the testimony is for this proposed rulemaking. Uh, these are, we'll go over the rulemaking next steps. This is a projected timeline for these rules after this public hearing. The dates are estimates, assuming that no significant changes to the proposal need to be made based on the testimony received. Based on the testimonies presented, the department will submit its findings and recommendations to the board. Uh, Board of Land and Natural Resources. If approved by the board, the Department of the Attorney General will conduct the final legal review. If approved, the proposed rules will be given to the governor for his final approval. And should the governor grant approval, certified copies will be filed with the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And after ten days, it becomes effective as law. Are, are there any questions regarding this process?
Uh, one question, if I may, David. Uh, regarding the deadline of this past Monday. On the herbivore plan of thirteen ninety-five amendments, has that? Uh, been a hard line closed or is that still open pursuant to the issues on Maui?
Um. That was the deadline, but you can continue to submit if you want to.
Very well. Thank you, mahalo.
Okay. Any other questions about this process? Okay, on behalf of the Board and, Board of Land and Natural Resources and the Division of Aquatic Resources. Mahalo for attending this public hearing. It is now six thirty-six PM and this public hearing is now adjourned. Mahalo for taking time out of your day to participate in this public hearing. Aloha.